One, we'll call the meeting into order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I just found out would like to show our sympathy, Jason Bog's mom passed away and just wanted to express our sympathy for him for that. The first thing on the agenda is the sheriff's retirement amendment and the commissary report.
Okay, so first thing, you should have a copy of what I received back from One America, the change we were wanting to make to commissary came last month, last meeting. For what we're looking for, number three, I think would be our best option, where the officer would be able to retire, stay in the position he's in now, and then just continue with the position he's in. Unless you guys have any other input on that one, but number three looks like the option that we were trying to look for.
Alright, so you just need confirmation from us on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, then I'll go back to Merritt Board and then we'll, we'll get moving with One America then.
Okay. So this is in regards to retirement. So at this point, the employee can stay on, the retirement benefits are able to start paying out, but further benefits cease, so that basically he's retiring, still getting paid, but his payment now no longer benefits the retirement account. Is there any questions?
Is that how other departments handle that?
A lot of them in Indiana have, ours did not, the verbiage was not there. Since we have an officer that's at thirty-two years of service and would like to retire and then continue on unemployment. So then that's when we went to One American. It was approved by myself, Merritt Board, and then came to council last month, and then that's what we'd like to move forward with.
Right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve option number three on the retirement, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And carries.
Okay, thank you. And then you should have received the last six months worth of commissary. You guys got any question, concern, comments?
Motion to accept.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept the commissary report as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, thank you. And then I've got one more that just came up in our kitchen, our double oven that we have is stamped nineteen ninety-seven, so it's, it's not doing very well, and it's not holding temperature, so I need to move forward and purchase a new double oven. The one I have is twelve thousand eight oh eight fifty-five. The first one we looked at was two thousand dollars more. The only thing that that was, was security screws, and my maintenance technician already has those, so we opted to go with a lower cost one, and he could put the screws in when, when we get them. I thought two thousand was kind of high just to have security screws on the side of the sheet metal, so. And this is through gloss and food equipment, which we've purchased through before, so I'd like, I'd just like approval to build and move forward and and get that up and bought.
I'd move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the twelve thousand eight oh eight fifty-five for a new double oven, all say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. And while you're up there, we've also got money in the dive team funds that we want to transfer. So is there any discussion on that? Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve transferring the dive team money to the K nine donation fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
A motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve or to waive second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to open the hearing on the public safety, on allocating revenue to the townships for public safety purposes. And we have that resolution, I think everybody received it. Okay, there was one township that's not eligible, they did not file timely application. The money that this one would have received goes back into the pool and is divided up between the county and towns. Is there any comments from township trustees or their representatives? Yes?
I am Clear Spring Township, I would just like to say thank you for considering this, and we appreciate any funding, just because of the ever increasing fire equipment costs.
Yes, and thank you for all you do. Is there any comments from the public? Alright, then we'll close the hearing. And we'll vote on the resolution.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution allocating revenue to the public safety purposes per seunt to code, Indiana Code six dash three point six dash six dash eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to waive second reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that is done. Alright, next on the agenda is Emily with an update on the comprehensive plan.
Alright, so I'm just here to give you guys a quick update on kind of what I've been working on the last couple of months. At the end of April, we had our first State of La Grange County event. We had, Jim was present for that, I'm not sure if anybody else was, but we had probably about seventy people who came for that. I think that because we were battling the first eighty-degree day of the year, we had a few people who would have rather been at home and outside, so. But otherwise, it was a really good event, good turnout, everything went expected, so I've met with the steering team for the comp plan. We've discussed some changes that we'll make for next year and moving forward, but otherwise, it was, it was a good turnout. I do have an updated working copy of the comprehensive plan, so I can send that out to you guys, just so that you can see what's been accomplished and where we're sitting on different things. The things that I've been working on the last couple of the months, so the first point that we'll touch on is Q L nineteen. That's based on age-friendly communities, so there is an AARP network that we formerly belonged to sometime in the last ten years, and our membership kind of lapsed, I guess. The majority of the people who are participating in that board aged out of participation, so we are working, Sherry Perkins and I are working moving back towards getting involved with that. We have a list of people that we'll be reaching out to, to bring together for a meeting, just to figure out next steps and what that looks like. So Sherry's been in contact with AARP, and we're just waiting for answers from them before we move forward with that meeting. Also, I have met with Bill Purcell at United Way concerning funding for the Tradition Kitchen. So that was one of our stellar projects that was included in our strategic investment plan for the county. My primary focus is the comprehensive plan, but I am still working on trying to make those projects happen for the community where I can make it fit. So that Tradition Kitchen, United Way had pledged up to two hundred thousand dollars to help make that project happen. We're just waiting on the barn project at the Council on Aging to kind of wrap up, and then we can move forward with talking to Bill Moore about securing that funding for the Tradition Kitchen, so excited about that project as well. The next point I'll touch on is L U eight, and that is the Main Street program point, so at this time, we do not have any Main Street programs in the county that belong to the Okra Network, but we do have a Main Street program functioning in virtually every community, or some kind of revitalization group functioning in every community in the county, which is fantastic. Main Street La Grange, we had our final Fridays kickoff in May, so we are hoping to see everybody out for a nice sunny evening in July. We also are doing a raffle this year, fundraising to hopefully start a fund for facade grants for downtown La Grange buildings. So those tickets are twenty dollars each, and you will win over a thousand dollars in prizes for mostly local businesses. Still, I'm still in conversations with Mark Eagleson at the Town of La Grange concerning reinstatement of their facade program. So that's a TIF-funded program, they were able to bring that back this year, because they had already submitted their list for what was to be paid for with those funds for this year, but their council is discussing bringing it back for twenty twenty-six. So our hope through Main Street is that our funds could potentially be used in combination with those funds from the Town of La Grange, so that it closes the gap on some match for those, those business owners. Topeka's doing a fantastic job down there, I do get updates from them, I don't actively attend their meetings, they're pretty late in the evenings, so. But I do stay in contact with Marlin and up to date on what they're doing, and she's, she's aware of the resources that I can provide. I've also attended a Wokeville Community Initiative meeting, so they have kind of two separate groups working down there in tandem with each other. The Community Initiative is a nonprofit group. They're working on some parks improvements, and they've put some steps in at the park and some lighting and picnic tables and things like that, so they're doing really good work down there. Just gave them my information, let them know what resources I'm able to provide, offered help with grant writing if they need it. Mongo, I applied for a five thousand dollar grant through W B P A on their behalf, and we were able to secure those funds to help with their park project. And then Howe is moving forward with their bathroom project after the major moves meeting, so thank you guys for that, and I'm still actively attending S R M A meetings and their events as often as possible. The next point, Q L thirteen, that one focuses on civic leadership, so in, also in May, we launched Leadership La Grange County twenty twenty-five out of the E D C office in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. So we are, we actually have our third month meeting this Friday for that. We have fifteen participants this year, it's our biggest class that we've had since that program returned, and we are hosting a panel every month. It's a three-hour monthly meeting for those participants, and we have a panel each month focused on civic leadership specifically, so bringing in different civic leaders from around the county to talk about how to get involved civically, why they got involved civically, what that can look like, and the difference that you can make. The next one would be E C ten, so that's focused on rail-serve business expansion. I did help present to the R D C for funding for a utility study down in the South Melford area. Sherry out of our office is actively working on moving that project forward, so I believe the utility study is completed, and we're just waiting on next steps now for, for that. L U sixteen is support for the twenty nineteen housing study. I've attended some meetings concerning the new housing development just east of La Grange. Sherry and Robbie are both heavily involved with that project, so they're a little more up to date than me typically, but that project looks like it's moving forward with two phases, and looks like we're going to get several new houses just outside of La Grange. I also met with a gentleman named Jake Sype, so he is the former leader from I H C D A, and he reached out because he remembered our stellar presentation from last December. So he is no longer in that executive role with I H C D A, that's the Indiana Housing Commission. They do a lot of grant funding for housing projects. So he just remembered our presentation and really wanted to know if we had any updates on housing in La Grange County, and to offer any resources that he was able to. He talked to me about different available funding and actually let me know that there are a couple of communities in La Grange County who are at the top of the list to receive potential tax credits for specific types of housing projects. So talking to the town managers of those towns about making that happen. Q L eighteen focuses on collaboration between nonprofits. I'm still attending La Grange County or La Grange Partners meetings, those are a countywide nonprofit network meeting, so staying involved there. Q L sixteen and seventeen are both focused on healthcare. For the last several months, I've been serving in an advisory role on the Wellness Connection Collaborative, so that's one of three collaborative groups in the county that were a result of the Community Health Needs Assessment through Parkview, new community health needs assessment for the county, or wrapped up the survey portion of that, and then Parkview will release their new results in December, so potential for those collaboratives to move forward in different ways, so we'll see what happens there. All three work on different kinds of projects in the county, so Wellness Connection is focused mostly on fighting obesity, hypertension, diabetes, those kinds of things. Q L fifteen is pertains to the multi-hazard mitigation plan. So Bill has, Bill Moore has meetings underway for that mitigation plan, staying up to date with him, chatting with him, and also collaborating, because we have some points that overlap between our two plans, namely points pertaining to drainage. So we have had a meeting in June that I brought together with the surveyor's office, Theron, Robbie, Bill, and myself. And we just sat down to talk about those different drainage points, and one of them has to do with drainage condition improvement, so I had previously had several meetings with different people around the county to talk about kind of what we needed to do, so. Purdue has a template to put together like a drainage plan for the county, so we just had a discussion. It sounds like the surveyor's office is on board with moving forward with working that plan, so once we get that plan in place, then we would re-approach for potentially an ordinance to, to enforce that plan. The discussion has been mainly that because we have so many processes in place already, that that plan would just build into the processes that already exist and add maybe another checkbox or two, and then it would work in seamlessly, and we could just make sure that we're following the rules. E C five, small business development, the chamber recently had their small business workshop, that was at the beginning of June, so I did participate in their planning for that. I also updated our starting a business packet through the E D C, so we maintain a, a document that just has step-by-step who you can, who you need to talk to, what you need to do to start a new business in La Grange County, so that's been updated. It has lists of architects and engineers and surveyors and attorneys and accountants and everything you could possibly need, all of the links to get to InBiz where you apply for the type of business that you want to start, so that's completely updated and is on our site, and then we also have paper copies that we take to different events. And the last, oh, nope, I have three more, sorry. The countywide historic inventory, so that's Q L six. I met with Todd from Indiana Landmarks, the last time we had a completed historic inventory survey was in two thousand nine. So Dark, Darcy actually kicked this process off before she departed from the position, so I'm just making sure that it's continuing to move forward. Having discussions with Todd about what we need to do to get that survey done. We also have Q L seven that ties in, so Todd and I discussed this in our meeting as well, this is for the National Register of Historic Places. So when we were in our stellar process, D N R let me know that specifically in downtown La Grange, the only historic building that is on the National Register is the courthouse. They have several buildings and a couple of residential corridors pegged as like interest sectors that they would really like to see. And then we have several of the historic schoolhouses out in the county that are great fits for this, so Todd and I are in conversations about a potential public meeting that we would hold for community members, for you guys, for people from the town to come and dispel myths and answer any questions that they have about the historic register. A lot of people think that when you join that, it puts a lot of rules in place about what you can or can't do with your property, and that's not true. So really, you can, you can put your building on that register, and you can tear it down the next day, and they're not going to stop you from doing that. So it would, the benefit would be that business owners would then qualify for some pretty substantial tax credits if they applied for them, and then nonprofit owners would have access to grants to help keep those buildings in place. So, and then the final piece that I've been working on or that I worked on had to do with R I nine, which is additional broadband funding opportunities. So this is not necessarily a funding opportunity, as much as it would just have been a potential opportunity to bring in broadband, broadband projects to the county. R E M C has done a fantastic job getting broadband out, out and around the county, but we do still have some members of the community who are not being served with those benefits, and so Lig Tel asked our office to look into the broadband-ready communities program, it's a state program. I reached out to the state and I had a meeting with their office. It's a certification that requires an ordinance be put in place, and after discussion with Theron and with Sherry, and with a couple of other people in the county, it doesn't seem like it's a great fit for us, namely because that ordinance has to have a statement in it that we will waive any of the permitting fees for broadband projects, which can potentially cost the county hundreds of thousands of dollars, and especially talking to Theron, it sounds like some of the broadband contractors don't always put the roads back how they find them, and so it's my opinion that it's not a great fit for our community, and we've communicated that with Lig Tel, but I wanted to bring it to you guys, just so that you're aware of it. We can absolutely work on that certification if it's something that everybody thinks we need to do, but especially with state budget cuts, it just didn't seem like probably something that we wanted to, to pursue further than that, so. That's what I have been working on.
Alright, well, thank you very much, Emily, we appreciate, you know, we paid for the comprehensive plan, we paid for a position to help motivate the progress of that plan, and I think you've done very well at it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks. Have a good day.
Okay, next on the agenda is the library, additional appropriations.
Good morning. My name is Richard Cooster. I'm the director of the La Grange County Public Library. If you recall, a few months ago, we came in and asked for an additional appropriation to pay for our addition to the branch library in Shipshewana. I'd like to report that, that that's done on schedule, perhaps a little ahead of schedule. Stop and see it if you're in Shipshewana. We'd like to have some new shelves. We planned on putting the new shelves in, in 2026 and paying for it under our 2026 budget appropriation. But we're concerned that if we wait another six months, then it's going to cost us a lot more money for the steel shelves. And so we've asked for an additional $125,000 additional appropriation. We have the funds to pay for it and I think we can make substantial savings, create a substantial savings for the library if we go ahead and do it now. And besides that, we'll be able to put the, the new space into service earlier. So in order, in order to spend this money in excess of our 2025 appropriations, we need your permission. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to oblige.
Is there any questions?
And you do have the funds.
We have the money.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the appropriation for the library. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is the innkeeper's tax ordinance.
Legislation was passed down at state that allowed La Grange County to go above the 5% cap on the innkeeper's tax, up to 8%. Then after they pass that, then it's up to the council to enact a rate. And Ryan may, may be able to speak to this more as he's on the tax commission. But we do have an ordinance to increase the rate to 8%.
Don't have a lot to add to that. I mean, I think it's, I think obviously we went through the process and started months ago. And I think it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of counties doing the same thing. And we have a unique situation with, you know, having tourism in the county. And I think this is a good, we've got a strong CVB, I think Sonya's back there. And doing good things. And I think this is a move in the right direction.
So just for clarification, the innkeeper's tax, the 8% is only on rooms?
Correct. Yeah. So it's obviously on hotel rooms, cabins, Airbnbs. There's, there's a few others, but it's not campgrounds and it's not long-term rentals, primarily hotel industry. So obviously, which is brought in by outside, you know, customers, but this has no effect on restaurants at all, just lodging, so.
And this is something as a council that we brought up and kind of pushed for to help us be able to do more. Is there any more discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance established in increasing the amount of county innkeeper tax. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
And moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, next on the agenda is HR for the handbook amendments.
Commissioners saw this handbook last week and they did make approval of the handbook changes that I'm going to present. Also went through the HR committee as well as the county attorney went through it as well. So what I passed around is more like the Cliff Notes version of what the changes were. So on page 26, overtime language. Currently, the way that that language reads is that holiday time and vacation time counts as hours worked when calculating overtime. That expense for the sheriff's office doubled their overtime line and sheriff had a discussion with sheriff. And we do not want that. That's not affordable. So the sheriff's office specifically has requested to not be included in that language. So it removes them from that language. So that would leave the only department with that language of the highway department. Did discuss that with Aaron and because their work schedule is very different than the sheriff's office, they're not experiencing the same budget constraints. So that's not an issue for them. So that change would only be to remove the sheriff's office. When sheriff submitted his budget, I believe for 2026, he wanted to make sure this was changed because he did not include that massive increase in his budget. The next one on page 27, call-out time for the highway department. We removed the on-call language that was there and made sure that we added language that allowed for a two-hour minimum when they get called out. That has been past practice, but has not been documented in the handbook. So it's just documenting what has been past practice for quite a while, is my understanding. Page 27, under emergency closing, closing. We did add language to allow for work-from-home language on qualified positions during emergency closings only. We did have some departments who were already doing that because they said there was a need, there was a requirement for that. So we just added language that would allow for that if we were closed, which really we should be limited on what those are. It would really only be if, I guess, buildings are destroyed through natural disaster or if roads are closed. Now with our generators, we should be here when power is out. So those should be limited anyway. Page 28 for vacation. Through conversation with the HR committee and with Jackie in the audit's office who processes payroll, I am asking that we do not do accrue on vacation, that we go to a flat. You give them their days at the start of the calendar year and then they have until the end of the calendar year to use them. Currently, they earn them from anniversary year to anniversary year. So you're accruing them over the course of the year and then you have the whole next year to use them. I will tell you, since I've been here, that is almost weekly, an employee will ask, how many days do I have? What do I got to use? Am I going to lose them? It is confusing for employees. Also, it was not, that way was not working well with the new payroll software. They've been working on that, but they're, as of two weeks before the holiday week, there were still some issues on that being our current way of doing it, working through the payroll system correctly. There's no salary to exempt people, still do not get vacation days. There's no change there. That stays all the same. The same number of earned days, that chart stays the same. There's no increase in days. It's just a matter of when we give them to them. So instead of getting it on each paycheck, you just get your pot at the beginning of the year and people have to manage their days. The other change to that would be there is no more payout. So if you don't use your days, there is no more language that we would pay those out. You need to use them. You got January 1 to December 31st. And then there is language that does allow for you to carry over half of your given amount for that year. So if you earn 10 days, you need to at least use five. You can carry over five. You don't get to then carry them over again. You've got to use them or lose them. It's, it's essentially use them or lose them. But it does give people that leeway so they know they have something major coming up in the upcoming year and they want to, again, manage their days appropriately, they could carry them into the next year. Any questions about that before I move on? I know that was kind of the, the topic of discussion.
I was, what was the reason for changing? I have talked to a few employees and all of them prefer the way it is now over the change. And if we're accruing now, if I understand it right, December 31st will be the accrual. And at that point, there won't be any more vacation time accrued until January 1 of the next year.
So at the start of every calendar year, you will get your vacation days and your sick days.
For the whole year.
For the whole year.
So if somebody quits January 3rd, they get paid for all their vacation time.
Right.
I thought of that as well, but theoretically, you don't get vacation time until you've already worked the year.
The year.
Therefore, that benefit is awarded to them at the end of the year. So they're not getting it ahead.
Right.
They're getting it retro.
So the switch, when the switch happens, basically everybody will get doubled up on vacation time to begin with and then it will balance out.
No, Kathy, Jackie and I are going to actually discuss that tomorrow morning. I don't see it that way. But I'm a visual person, so I'm gonna, I've got some things mocked out to talk about. Essentially, we need to decide i-if we're going to do the math, what would people have earned on January 1, 2025 and put that in place now in July? Or if we're going to wait until January 1 of '26? Either way, you're going to look at what should they have got, what did they accrue and what's, and subtract and what's the balance owed? We're not, I'm not looking to give anybody double what they've earned. It's just a matter of at some point you've got, I mean, there has to be, you got to make a line in the sand, so to speak, and do it. But it's not, I'm not trying to give anybody double.
I'm, like you say, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it because the employees that I've talked to completely understand the system and like it. They know hours worked goes to vacation time. Kathy, payroll, your office, is this much of an issue? I mean, I used to do payroll and these kind of things weren't an issue for me. But even if the software doesn't do it, it can be, but you're talking about more employees than I dealt with.
Software is working fine. We've got the bugs worked out. And I, I've not had anybody, once you explain the system to it, how it accrues with each one. And it shows on their pay stub how many hours they have.
But it doesn't show them what they're going to lose.
No, it does not show the total.
And that, 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 to me, my understanding is that becomes the issue, that people don't know what they need to use so they don't lose it. Which then in turn, we end up getting these letters saying, oh, they had X number of hours and they couldn't use them. So now we're paying out cash to pay out time that people didn't use. That I hear is because we didn't know, or that, the impression I'm left with, I should say. Even though there said, that, that we're told that it's because they, they are understaffed or they couldn't take the time off.
I know it's an issue. It was always been an issue down at the sheriff's office. They even get, be able to use them all, right?
Which is a different issue.
Right. Which is not going to change. Correct.
Right.
And a report was provided, and I don't know if it is with the new system because we just recently switched it to every department that this is your list of employees, their current available leave. And it, it did show their balance on their, their cap, the most that they could, what the amount that they would lose.
So is, would that be an issue that the software could work through to where that could be on the paycheck? So they'd know how much is left?
I'm not sure if that can show up on the paychecks or not. Like I said, it was provided in a report to every department.
Right.
Alls they had to do was ask, but I mean, anybody can do the math. I'm a five-year employee. I have this many vacation days. This is the, how many I can have in my bank before I lose it on my anniversary day.
Okay, go on.
Let's see. Sick and personal, it's just making it so that they, you're issued your six, six sick days at the start of the year. So that language just makes it consistent with the vacation time. Page 35, the leave 4.3, letter L. The sick and vacation language, we made it so that the hour language equals. So if it's a seven-hour employee, eight-hour employee or 12-hour employee, that was more like a housekeeping update. On page 36, leave of absence, we added some language because as of July 1, we have a requirement to allow without penalty an employee to attend a conference at their children's school, like an IEP meeting. So we added that language. That's a law that's in effect for four years, I think till 2029. So it's in the handbook to make us compliant with that for the time being. On page 44, which under the FMLA, this is a request to add paid parental leave under FMLA. So when a person qualifies for FMLA and they are either giving birth or they are the, the father in the situation and their spouse is giving birth or they're adopting children, we will pay their first 10 days of their leave, of their FMLA for, as paid paternity leave. Essentially, my, I know there are other counties doing it, received some emails, kind of copied what Cosiasko County is doing. And really it's, it's, I see it as a net neutral benefit. Their wages are already budgeted there. So we're just paying those first 10 days. Good recruitment tool for me to show that we have paid parental leave. And they have to qualify for FMLA. So they'd have to be here at least a year before they could utilize that. The next thing is pre-employment testing on page 73. We removed alcohol. We don't, since I've been here, we have not conducted an alcohol screening in our pre-employment. It's just a drug screening through a urine test. So removed alcohol. Page 73, under reasonable suspicion, added a human resources director as one of the individuals who can request an employee to take a drug or alcohol screening. Page 89, personal appearance, under number four. For, we have a, we're prohibited to wear shorts. However, for our highway department, our parks department, surveyor's office, where they're out working in the heat, they would like to be able to wear shorts, which I think is, is appropriate, but they need to be part of the uniform. So not, not, we're not talking about basketball shorts or nothing like that. These are uniform-approved shorts. So change there. And the last one, page 105, under work violations, added a number four, which is poor attendance, frequent tardiness or missing work when no available leave time is available. There were several miscellaneous housekeeping things that the attorneys found that they wanted cleaned up. But it, those housekeeping things did not change our language or policy.
Okay, on page 73, the pre-employment, you removed alcohol. But the next one down allows you, let's say you're interviewing somebody and you smell alcohol, you can at that point request.
We wouldn't do that during an interview because they don't work for us. Reasonable suspicion will be Aaron. So Aaron, for some reason, I'm with Aaron, something's going on and I believe he's under the influence. As our employee, I now have the authority that I can ask for him to be tested.
Yeah, I just didn't want wording to eliminate that possibility.
Yeah, no, this is, it was just, the reasonable suspicion is specifically for our current employees. I would hope that if we had somebody in an interview that we thought was under the influence of something, we would just choose to pass on them.
The commissioners are fine with this?
The commissioners passed it, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the changes in the handbook. Is there any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And while you're up there, the salary ordinance.
You got to waive second reading, if you want to.
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Salary ordinance amendment.
So I'm not sure which order you have them in, but I'll start with the order that I have them in. My first one is currently the sheriff's office, specifically dispatch, has a position titled dispatch supervisor. Sheriff is asking for temporary to be allowed to use the funds because we do not have anybody in that position, have not had anybody in that position for a little while. He would like to use those funds and hire an additional dispatcher. He is planning to fill the supervisor position at some point. However, the interested can. candidates for that position, he would like them to have more experience under their belt before he would want to promote them. So he would like use of that line to hire an additional dispatcher. And the HR committee gave it a positive recommendation.
And I have it worded that it's a temporary thing until the dispatch supervisor is appointed, and then this extra dispatcher is away.
Yes, correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the salary ordinance amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
All right, thank you. The next one is just a job title slash duty change. Also, under dispatcher, we currently have two IDAX assistants. We would like to have one of the IDAX assistant positions changed to a job title and job description that we've had on file. We just have not utilized it, which is training officer slash dispatch. So it's one of our current dispatchers, who currently is helping with training shift. They do training on, on his shift, and so it would be just a change of job title and job duty, no wage change. That all would stay the same. We're just asking for a job title change on the ordinance. And that came with a positive recommendation from the committee.
I would move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the salary ordinance for the dispatch training officer. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last one, I was hoping Kim was here, but I don't see her. So the clerk, Kim, our clerk, has asked for an amendment to the salary wage ordinance to pay the election board prior to the end of the year. Her ask for that is because the election board, per Kim, has fulfilled their duties for the year with the special election in May. She stated that there is no work remaining for them for the remainder of the year, and has asked for an amendment to be allowed to pay for the board. This did not have a favorable recommendation from the HR committee. They felt they needed to leave it the way that it was in the event that something else would come up that we would need our election board for over the course of the remainder of the year.
And I did find out that the election board attains training on the non-general election year, so that they're ready to go for the general election. So that is a duty of the election board, that they would need to fill, that it's towards the end of the year.
So we would need a motion to deny if.
I think so, yeah.
We so choose, and that's what I would vote to do.
We could also.
Just not make a motion.
No motion being made dies for a lack of emotion.
Sounds like that is a option that we will take. So there will be no motion.
No motion, okay.
And I did have one more, and this is more of a housekeeping thing. At the parks department, they received a grant for their swim instructors. It was through the Indiana Department of Health to help with drowning prevention. And I just need a, we need to do an amendment to the salary ordinance so that we can pay these swim instructors from the grant fund, same wage that they would have gotten from park funds, but it's just now a grant fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the salary ordinance for the swim instructors to come from a grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to waive second reading.
Okay. Moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. All right, next on the list is the additional appropriations.
Those were sent to you. They were properly advertised. On there, you'll see the opioid restricted funds, and that was in case the health department is applying for a grant, and they would use those funds. But at this time, we don't know if they're going to get the grant yet.
And everyone should have received these in the email. Is there any questions?
Make a motion to approve the additional appropriations.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the additional appropriations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to waive second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the legal claims. I'll turn that over to Harold.
All right, we did meet with legal counsel. We reviewed each claim. I would point out that there are several that are being reimbursed or split. About, just over halfway down, there was a legal claim for the innkeeper's tax. We, as, as a council, may want to consider if there are options, since we're generating money for them, it would seem appropriate that they would contribute the cost of any legal fees. I'm not sure how that would work out, should be done. But as I said, we reviewed the legal claims. This is for work done actually in May. Of this, $6,212.50 are litigation-related. So I would make a motion of approval.
Is that question, I guess? Is the approval subject to the convention and tourism board paying that?
Well, I think that would be appropriate. My thought was, I make a motion, we get a second, that opens the procedural door for discussion, and amendments can be made at that point.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the legal bills. Is there any discussion?
I'll reiterate what I said. That that be subject to the approval, subject to the convention and tourism board paying for the increase in the hotel motel tax.
Offering an amendment to the motion.
Sure.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been amended and seconded to make an amendment to the motion. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, is there any more discussion on the new motion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Sorry to make it complicated.
Yeah, sorry.
And then next on the list is transfers. And again, everyone should have received those in the email. Is there any questions, discussion on the transfers?
Move approval.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the transfers. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the minutes from the June 9 meeting. Is there any questions, changes?
Move approval as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Is there anything else that needs to come before the council at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
That was good.